That's red to me.
Tell me when you're ready, Mr. Lesko.
That's red, all right.
You're ready? Well, here they come. The July 18th, 2023 meeting of the City Council of Springfield, Illinois is called to order. Please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, will you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase. Alderwoman Natriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderman Connolly, our Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Here, Clerk Lesko.
Madam Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to read the civility pledge. In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. At this time, I would like to, before we call the first agenda on the docket for the zoning commission, I would like to acknowledge that it is Linda O'Brien's birthday today.
Happy birthday.
So happy birthday, Linda. You're welcome. The next item on the agenda then is docket number 2023-020 for the property located at 1700 South College. The petitioner is Brick City LLC. Present zoning classification is R5B General Residence and Office District, Section 155.021. Requested zoning relief is a variance of Section 155.056, minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow the use of a duplex on a lot containing 5,262 square feet of lot area instead of the 6,000 square feet required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
I have moved that we accept the proposal as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the proposal as submitted. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. The voting will now be open. And the motion carries with 10 voting yes and none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2023-021 for the property located at 621 Stanford Avenue. The petitioner is Universal Properties of Illinois Incorporated. The present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief is conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.341, A and C, height and size regulations for off-premises signs, and several variances to relocate an existing billboard structure, a single stacked, two-faced billboard structure containing two faces, each measuring 10 feet by 40 feet, supported by a monopole structure and using halogen lighting and having a height of 50 feet from the current premises located at the property commonly known as 312 North Street to the proposed premises 621 Stanford Avenue. The features of the existing billboard structure will remain intact, except the billboard structure will be converted to an electronic digital display. Following the relocation of the existing billboard structure from the current premises to the proposed premises, the number of sign faces and the size of the sign faces on the billboard structure will remain the same. However, the proposed billboard structure will be installed at the proposed premises so that two sign faces shall be back-to-back and parallel with each other rather than in a V configuration as with the existing billboard structure. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the proposal as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the proposal as submitted and a second. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? It's actually not an ordinance, sorry, the zoning petition. Okay, all those in favor, please vote yes. Oh, do we have, oh, Alderwoman Connolly, sorry.
Thank you, and I think Alderwoman Natriano is probably going to express what it, we, I just wanted to point out that we have had prior electronic billboards substituted in my ward. And with those billboards, we've asked that the company also include as part of their rotation, when necessary, some community notices. So those have been used in my ward for notifications of when the police department and the fire department are doing firing. They've done some notices, electronic ads for not-for-profits, local not-for-profits. So Alderwoman, we talked about this and I believe.
Yep, WC Media, the petitioner, has agreed to host those PSAs as we need them.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
So Alderwoman Natriano, do you have anything else you want to add?
Oh, I was just going to say that we're just moving a billboard and I don't think that it is going to add to any clutter in the area. I think it's the appropriate area for a billboard to exist, so I don't have a problem with that.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, can I clarify that the motion to accept the proposal would be the actual petition itself and not staff's proposal or recommendation of denial?
That is correct, right, Alderwoman? Correct. So motion has been first and seconded to approve the request as submitted. All discussion is over. Voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Motion is approved, 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2023-022 for the property located at 827 North Bond Street. The petitioners are Paul E. Carey and Jacqueline A. Carey. The present zoning classification is R2 Single Family and Duplex Residence, District Section 155.017. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to R3B General Residence District, Section 155.018 and variance of Section 155.056, minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow a three-unit residential dwelling on a lot containing 6,420 square feet of the lot area instead of the 7,500 square feet lot area required. 155.114B Regulations for the location of off-street parking facilities to allow parking spaces in the required front yard setback. 155.062C1 Permitted Obstructions in the Required Front Yard to allow parking spaces in the Required Front Yard Setback. And 155.480I Landscape Screening and Lighting Regulations, Transitional Buffer Yard Requirement and Landscaping to allow reduction of the required transitional buffer yard of the west property line from 10 feet to 0 feet. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff, subject to the Traffic Engineer's approval. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
May I make a motion to accept the, accept as submitted?
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second to accept the request as submitted. Is there any discussion on this zoning request? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. He's got a thumbs up, so I'm going to say yes. That's 10 voting yes and none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2023-023 for the property located at 4,117 Wabash Avenue. The petitioner is Roots Latin Grill LLC. Present zoning classification is B1 Highway Business Service District, Section 155.033. The requested zoning relief is a conditional permit use pursuant to Section 155.033C7, conditional permitted uses in the B1 Highway Business Service District, and 155.200 Taverns and a variance of Section 155.200A2 Taverns to allow a tavern with liquor sales by the drink on a zoning lot which is located within 100 feet from the nearest lot on which there is a residence. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the request CPU limited to tenant space 4,117 Wabash Avenue with the floor area not to exceed 2,100 square feet and approval of the variance as submitted. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a first and a second to accept the staff recommendation, and the staff recommendation was approval of the requested CPU limited to tenant space 4,117 Wabash Avenue with the floor area not to exceed 2,100 square feet and approval of the variance as submitted. Is there any discussion on this zoning request? Seeing none, voting should now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2023-024 for the amendment to Chapter 155.106 pertaining to all drive-up service facilities. The requested zoning relief is amendment to Chapter 155.106 pertaining to all drive-up service facilities. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approve the amendment as submitted. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendation for the zoning change.
Second.
We have a first and a second to accept the recommendations. Is there any discussion on this zoning request? Okay, seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries 10 voting yes, none voting no. That concludes our zoning portion of tonight's meeting.
Linda, we got you out of here on your birthday.
My birthday.
Nice birthday dinner, Linda. At this time, I would like to just ask that we take a moment of silence while we're transitioning over. We've had a lot of deaths in our community recently, so I just thought it would be nice if everyone took a moment of silence. So we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. The Chair will now recognize Treasurer Redpath Fager for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you. The Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of June, beginning balance $75,7454. We took in total receipts of $19,468,750. We had total disbursements in the month of June totaling $25,934,386, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of June The ending balance in the General Fund also included $19,473,940, which is the June ending balance of the ARPA money. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Okay, the Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion on the financial report? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Chair will now recognize that Budget Director Metzger is here and there is an OBM contract report. Does anyone have any questions on that? Alderman Gregory.
I do. I have two questions. I see that we have a contract for $25,000 for audit of various OPED grants. Is there any information on what grants and things that they would be auditing?
I don't, it was a forensic audit request through Sikkich. I'm not sure what, what exactly, which ones they're looking at or anything.
Can you give me that information where you have?
Yeah, yep.
My second question would be, we have a purchase for 2023 Ford Bronco. What department is that going to?
That was for Public Works. I believe it was for somebody, one of their inspectors.
A Ford Bronco, a 2023 Ford Bronco?
Yeah. It was part of, we had ordered a, I believe we had ordered a Ford Ranger. They had canceled, Ford had notified the state contractor that they had canceled all the Rangers, any production of them. So we went out as part of our, as part of the supply chain issue looking for a new unit wherever we could find, or a replacement unit wherever we could find. Because I believe the, Tim, you can help me. This is one of the units that seemingly broke down quite a bit and they needed to replace it right away.
One of the vehicles that they were using. Come with the mic? Reliable, so they purchased this Ford Bronco.
Tim, can you speak in the mic, sorry? Just so the people at home can hear you.
So normally, our inspectors, are we talking about our building inspectors, people who go out and do that? Normally, they ride little vehicles for gas mugs, et cetera. I'm not understanding how a Ford Bronco is a.
Well, let me back up. It's possible, I could have missed, it may not be for an inspector. I can, I will check on that and let you know what it's for. Because it could be for engineering or something else.
It looks like Budget Director Metzger may know. Oh, not on that, never mind.
Yeah.
Never mind.
But I will, I can get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, Alderman Gregory, it's not the first Bronco Sport that we've purchased. There was another one purchased previously, probably as of first of June. It was because escapes were not available and the Bronco Sport was like less than $2,000 higher. It meets all the needs for the person that requested it.
All right, well, when you can, give me that information of what, who's driving the Bronco.
Don't go anywhere.
It's not me, Alderman.
I know.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes, I assume it's still coming off a state contract?
This one was not.
It wasn't?
This one was, we solicited bids from local.
And is it more than what we would have paid for the Ranger or whatever?
Well, I would have to, I don't, they were comparable in price. I can get you those details as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the OBM contract report?
Mayor, I can answer the Sikkich audit question.
Budget Director Metzger has answered. Alderman Gregory, do you want any questions?
Thank you.
There was a lot of staff turnover in OPED this past year.
Is your microphone on, can you all hear?
There was a lot of staff turnover in OPED this past year and the HUD grants and the cannabis grant and various other grants in the department. The auditors are looking to make sure that they're compliant.
So, okay, thank you. And I understand the HUD portion, the federal state grants all have compliance levels that we must meet, but the cannabis grant, it doesn't, it's not a.
It's not an external grant. It would just be ordinance in the agreement.
To the ordinance, it is, thank you.
Any other discussion on the OBM contract report? The Chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the July 5th, 2023 regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes. We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
Go move, Mayor.
We have a first and a second, any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
Go move, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I want to.
Alderman Rockford. Oh, wait, Alderwoman Connolly signed up, my apologies, Alderman Rockford. I'm sorry. Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have two items for the consent agenda.
Ma'am.
First, for the clerk's records, I'd like to please be noted as being present for ordinance 2023-309.
Noted.
I have to vote present on things that come through my day job. And then, second, I would like to move that ordinance 2023-322 be withdrawn from the consent agenda and be placed on debate for tonight.
Okay, so you want to withdraw 2023-322 from the consent agenda and place on the debate agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is that okay, Clerk Lesko, you got it?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of the motion to move that from the consent agenda and put it on the debate agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 2023-322 has been moved. Other than that, any other discussion on the consent agenda? With that being said, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Will you vote?
Well, this is a vote for the consent agenda. Oh, vote on your record. Can you make the voting now open?
Yes.
Okay, voting is now open. Those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. It's not working. Roll call vote? She says roll call vote.
All right, Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Rockford. Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Natriano.
Aye.
Alderman Carlson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
10 ayes and 0 nays, Mayor.
All right, so the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Go move.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion on the final passage? Okay. Can we make the voting open or do we want a roll call vote?
Looks like we're having a little bit.
Roll call vote.
All right. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory, Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Rockford. Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Natriano.
Aye.
Alderman Carlson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
10 ayes and 0 nays, Mayor.
Okay, the motion carries with 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda numbers 2022-384, 2023-086, 2023-173, 2013-201. Still think that's 2023, isn't it? There's a typo every time on this. 2023-201, 2023-202, and 2023-203 remain table or in committee. Any action on any of those items on the agenda? Okay.
Mayor?
Ma'am.
We do have the debate agenda too now.
We're getting there. Those were tabled in committee, debate's next. Okay, so for the debate agenda, we have ordinance number, and I'm just going to read it. Is that okay with you without the machines working? 2023-322.
Here we go.
Oh, it came up, good job. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of RFP VM 24-04 with Motor Parts and Equipment Corporation DBA Napa Auto Parts for a turnkey parts store operation for an amount not to exceed $5,850,000 from August 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2026 for the Office of Budget and Management. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, actually, and I put in to speak, I would request that we hold this ordinance in committee.
Okay.
Some questions.
Second.
We have a motion to put this ordinance back to committee. We have a second, any discussion on that? Okay. Can we vote on our machines?
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor of putting this back into committee, please vote? Yes? Okay. All those say aye, stay aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. I expected you to put it on committee originally. Okay, the next item on the agenda will now be, I was just looking for the screen. Okay, there we go. 2023-341, an ordinance authorizing reduction of fines and cost owed to the city of Springfield in the amount of $38,505 for a total payment to the city in the amount of $7,530 to settle Sangamon County Circuit Court cases 19-MR-723 and 21-MR-1195, City of Springfield versus Julian Randall and weed liens for 2321 South 14th Street for emergency passage. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2023-341 on emergency passage.
I will motion for consent, but I know there will be some discussion.
We have a motion for consent, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second for consent, any discussion?
Point of parliamentary procedure, I don't understand that motion.
Sorry. Do you have a motion to approve, maybe, Alderman? Is that what you think?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve from Alderman Gregory? Still, do we still have a second? Second from Alderman Rockford?
Are you second?
Either, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? It looks like Alderman Gregory, you have pushed your button.
So this is, I brought this forth as this is a house over in Ward 2. This house has been vacant for many, many years. The person that bought it, bought it for back taxes, of course, not knowing for a substantially low amount. And they have completed it over the time span, so with careful discussion with Corporation Counsel, it was decided that maybe the amount should be reduced as there was all types of promises and things made, of course, before the administration change with the score cases and things of that nature. So at this time, you know, me and Corporation Counsel talked and it was decided that the fair amount would be for what the city has in cost as far as Senator inspectors taking care of the property and the liens and fines. Currently, our vacant property, before we go to registration, is one year. He did do a very, very good job with the house. It is totally new and it's ready to be sold. And the only way that it can be sold, of course, is that we remove this lien. So I ask that we pass this motion so we can get a house off of the vacancy and be sold. And then, you know, I will say that I did write passes to see the house and I'm amazed that it, from the inside to the outside, is all brand-new electrical plumbing, little bit of brick on the front, new siding, roofs, everything. He did a fabulous, fabulous job, so I hope that we can push through. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderman Redpath.
So who could tell us how we got to the point where he owed the city $38,000? Is that somebody from Public Works Kentucky Corporation Counsel?
Alderman Redpath, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Oh, please, thank you.
Because there were per diem fines, so there were fines accruing per day. This case began in April of 2019. We took final judgments in August of 2019. So the property was accruing several hundred dollars worth of violations per day, which is how it got up to the $46,000 approximate fine amount.
So was it just because of weeds and trash? Or what exactly was the fine, what's the violation?
No, there are actually three different cases that this ordinance is addressing. So there's a, there were several property violations that were occurring, violations of the building code, so exterior structure violations separate from your weed and grass trimming. Then there was a dead tree that was failed to be removed, and that's a $450 fine. And then we had three different times we had to go out and cut the grass. We did that for three different years, a couple times each year. So the total due on that is $2,135. But it was the, it was really the property violations and per diem fine in the initial, the 2019 case that led to the bulk of the fines in this case.
So we've agreed that, so you're asking for us to relieve the $38,000 or the $7,500?
$7,500.
So that's what it's been reduced to?
With this council's approval, that would be the final payment for all three of those cases.
But I think your question was, how much are we forgiving, right?
Yes.
We're forgiving $38,505.
Any other discussion, Alderman Redpath? Okay, Alderman Carlson.
Yeah, I think that answered most of my questions. So this was just based on fines of not cutting grass or removing trees? It's as simple as that?
No, it also has, there were structural violations to the premises as well in the first case, the 19MR-723.
Because from reading this, my understanding, I'm not, I mean, $38,000, they're getting off of 75, so we're forgiving roughly $31,000 in debt?
No, we're actually forgiving the $38,505. That's the actual.
So even more, okay, four to $7,500, okay.
Any other questions, Alderman Carlson?
No, thank you.
Okay, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, thank you, mayor. Alderman Gregory, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward. I think this is exactly the kind of situation where we, as a council, should be, you know, recognize that things have changed, reward someone who is making an effort to improve neighborhood, and I very much support and encourage us to use this kind of a model for a situation like this. So thank you very much for bringing this forward, I look forward to voting for this.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Alderwoman Conley?
No, thank you, mayor.
Okay, Alderman Hanauer.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I, I wanted to just to ask, so the, is this a new owner that, or is this the same owner that got, that cured the fine? How did, I'm trying to understand.
So the same owner who's asking for this reduction now was the owner that purchased the property in January of twenty nineteen?
And did he, did he come forward to AC to plead his case? You know, I mean, to me, if a guy's trying, I would think that the men court would kind of give some breaks here and there, but you know, did, did he, why did it get so high? Did he not come to court? You know, what's the deal?
So we had several appearances set for administrative court between April and August of twenty nineteen, but no corrective action was taken during that time, so the violations were still outstanding. So we took final judgment in, on August twenty-first of twenty nineteen. We then still did not have compliance, so we actually had to register that judgment in circuit court, so we had to go over to the county and actually have the defendant served with summons, and then the defendant failed to appear for four cases, or for four appearances at the time, so it was not until March seventeenth of twenty twenty-two on what's called a rule to show cause, which is a contempt proceeding where the defendant appeared, and we were able to begin getting repairs done on the property. And so at that time, the fines had accrued to a point where, you know, we were sending attorneys over to court and had an open county court case to try to recoup some of the fines and get the property fixed.
So he, so in a sense, he didn't come to AC court, admin court? He just kind of ignored our stuff, and then once once the threat of contempt or something came in, that's when he saw the light or something, I don't, I mean, that's kind of why all of a sudden, you know, and in the meantime, we're racking up expense, you know, incurred from the city, so.
If I may, this is, this is a house that a guy bought for five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars. So he bought a house that he had no clue of the amount of extensive work that it needed. He had various, various, as corporation counsel said, to really fix the house, and, you know, with money and finances, it took a little while, and you know, we had to do what we had to do to make him show, for whatever reason, people miss things, but I will say that we got one or two options. We can hold the lien to the house and take the house, or whatever, and, or we can grant this, let this, let this house be sold and get a family in it, and help improve the neighborhood, that's the two choices. I totally understand, and, you know, my conversation with the person that called me about it was we really want these houses taken care of, and that's why these things are here, but we are happy that he's got it done, and the level that he's got it done, I ain't talking about just throwing some lipstick, you know, on it and, you know, making it paint and all that stuff, he really, really has totally redone this house, and, you know, I know I have a color printer, but I tried to print it out, but I really couldn't show the brand new-ness, I'm talking about, you know, nice bricks, some stuff that you normally don't really see on South Fourteenth. It's a really, really nice house, and it's going to complete that neighborhood, so with that being said, I hope that we support this and pass this, thank you.
Any other questions, Alderman Hanauer? I'm gonna take that as a no, Alderman Donlin.
I don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, I just want to make sure I clearly understand this one, we had a, the present owner purchased the property at Taxil, made all these improvements, and, but before, obviously, they were demonstrating that they were going to improve the property, accrued all these fines, and it's, because I know this, the, getting to circuit court, that, it takes a while to get through our court process, loan over to the circuit court. So this is going on, all these improvements have already been made, whether we forgive the lien or not, the improvements have already been made, is that, is that right, okay?
Yes, sir.
But I guess I'm failing to understand why we need to forgive the fines when all the improvements have been made already?
He can't sell it.
He can't sell it?
He can't sell it with a lien on it, and he can't afford forty thousand dollars, so it's just-
It's too much money. Okay. Well, my, I guess my concern isn't really with this project, but we have a, and I know Alderwoman Conley has one in her area as well, but we have a project, and I should say we have a terrible development in my ward that has significant fines over, well over five hundred thousand dollars, and my concern is that we walk down, even though this is not apples to apples, I admit that, it's a completely different set of circumstances, but we have, in my ward, we have a development where they have not kept it up. They started to make improvements, they had deadlines, didn't meet the deadlines, now we're taking them to court, and it's just a, it's a terrible mess, a terrible eyesore for the neighborhood. And I just, I caution us getting into the habit of starting to forgive anything, because we got a whole, I mean, this is, and I don't mean to be preaching, I'm really not, but this is the kind of thing that we complain all the time about at the horseshoe of property owners not keeping their properties up, not doing their share. We obviously have one, the property owner here, that's demonstrated, they've made the improvements, I'm happy to see that, but for the ones that haven't fixed up the properties and aren't willing to cooperate, aren't willing to demonstrate that they want to see Springfield better, we cannot forgive those, so I didn't, I talked to somebody about this earlier today, about, you know, what I was gonna do, because we didn't talk about it, Alderman, but this conversation has helped me make up my mind this evening, so thank you.
And I'll say, you know, I went back and forth from calling everybody, but I promise you, I don't really know the rules on all this, and I really try to just try to come do it natural and lay it out to a man, and explain to people, so thank you.
Any other questions, Alderman Donlin?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Conley, kind of-
Answer your questions.
Took care of it for me, thank you.
All right, Alderman Redpath.
So Alderman Gregory, you said that the guy had some agreements and understandings from the prior administration, what, did they they say they were gonna make some compensations for him?
At one point in time, he had a letter for something that needed to be completed in December of twenty twenty-two, that we, it would have, some COs that he needed to clear up, and the fine would have been three thousand dollars, but of course, for whatever reason, that wasn't done, or whatnot from the papers, and so that's why we're here.
So there's no verbal contract of any kind from the prior administration to him that they were gonna reduce it?
No, just this paperwork from us, the city, the city as far as when we sent out the documentation of what he needs to do to, for us to reduce any type of fine at that time.
Any other questions, Alderman Redpath?
No.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, mayor, and I just want to follow up, because I think Alderman Donlin raised some really good points, and I want to clarify when I say this is the kind of case where we need to be open-minded about making some allowances, because I also have a large commercial, I mean, I consider, you know, a large rental property to be a more commercial venture, that creates frequent heartburn, and that's the polite word for the horseshoe tonight, in my ward and in my, and for me. Those sorts of larger operations are a completely different situation. Alderman Gregory, I would have liked to have talked to you before the meeting, but I think you explained this well, and and I understand when you have, you know, a situation with, you know, a single house, it's, it is intended to be a single family residential structure, so you know, we are, we are looking to encourage that kind of development, that kind of infill development that that really improves neighborhoods, and I, you know, per violation per day racks up very quickly. So certainly don't think that this should be used, and I would make this very clear on the record, this should not be used as a case for people to get out of responding to our inspectors, responding to our administrative court, or responding to the circuit court, that's not the situation. And I think these are the kinds of, this is the kind of case that should be discussed and decided upon on a case-by-case basis, and I'm very specific to this one, so I certainly, I appreciate all the questions. I appreciate Alderman Donlin really reemphasizing, because we both have, have large issues in our ward that we're dealing with, but again-
Large headaches, right?
We're gonna say headache again, yes. We're using all of our polite words around those cases. But yes, so I thank you, Alderman Gregory, again, for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
And no more questions or comments, mayor.
All right, Alderman Rockford.
Yes, so as a new Alderman, is this the first time we've heard about this case? I mean, this is a new ordinance, and it's been going on since two thousand nineteen? So my question is, is, you know, here it is going on four years, and we're just now coming to a an agreement? I mean, whether it's past administration, whoever, I mean, shouldn't this been addressed sooner? Rather than now?
Do you want me to answer that?
I, anybody, I'm just asking, as a new Alderman, Alderwomen, I mean, this is, this started in two thousand nineteen, and now we're we're gonna have to decide on-
They don't come to council. It's my understanding that my office would not bring these types of settlements to the city council.
I think it's in front of you, because the mayor wouldn't waive the fees.
Actually, uh, mayor?
And the mayor has-
Well, I think when he did, when he did waive fees, we had a-
Oh, no, I mean this mayor, sorry.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, okay, well, we've talked old administrations and stuff, and I don't, so I'm kind of confused why this, this two thousand nineteen's been going on, and here it is, two, twenty twenty-three, and we're still, still talking about it.
Just so you know, Alderman, I have requested from corporation counsel that an ordinance be drafted that any debt over fifteen thousand dollars comes to council, so this would be a typical thing from that point forward, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Is there any more questions, Alderman Rockford?
No, thanks.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, I guess my biggest concern, and, you know, I don't, I don't like to forgive debt, and everybody knows, you know, my case, my take on it, but you know, what, you're talking about your two, two buildings, so basically what we're doing is, we're saying is, if you sell it to somebody or somebody buys it, then the fines get, then we'll forgive the fines, it's-
That's not sold.
Absolutely, that's what we're saying.
Well, it's, it's kind of the precedence that we're trying to set here, I mean, you know, and, you know, there'll be some, some people that might come forward that, that will sell it to someone else so that they can get away with not having to pay fines. That's, that's my only concern. I applaud the guy for what he did, I appreciate it, and, but I'm very concerned about what what this does going forward. Very concerned about it, so.
I would say, though, for their apartments, and I have some in my ward too, if the one on Monroe ever gets fixed, to the point-
When it gets fixed.
When it gets fixed, when it gets fixed, as it's supposed to, we should look at something to get it rolling, get the lien off, and get people living in it. We have a shortage on affordable homes, all types of stuff, we want them to get it fixed. The city doesn't want the property, we don't want the properties, we want to nudge them to get it fixed. The per diem adds up quickly, and I would, I would stand right along with my colleagues on a reasonable, this, trust me, I wanted it lower, but corporation counsel advised me heavily that, that our costs and the things that we needed to be covered on, that we did, and our employees going onto the property, cutting up trees, needed to be covered, and and it wasn't a good decision to go beneath that, and that's why the seventy-five thirties, there is not a number that just came out of the boom, it's what we got into this situation. Besides, it's charged to somebody every day, because we're trying to nudge them to get it fixed, and say, hey, we, you're past the three years point, and I'm right along with you, we want the houses, we've lowered our vacant houses registry and added a little wiggle room for people to get it fixed, because we want them fixed quickly, and we're gonna have these situations, this is administration difference, it was once upon a time, you know, a previous mayor would make these choices, but this is something that we gotta, gotta, you know, come out and make these choices, and when those get fixed, I wanted to look at that and stand with our colleagues, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Carlson.
I'm trying to keep this simple and understand it, so Alderman Gregory or corporation counsel, the current owner now is the one who racked up the debt. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so he knew going in, I, it's becoming clear now, I mean, I've got a little concern as far as what sort of precedent we set on this whole thing, we, we don't have a good track record of, we have some issues with debt forgiveness that we've known the last couple of years.
Well, he bought the house that was already, it had exceeded the three-year timeframe, and when you exceed that three-year timeframe, at that time, we start putting the hurting on you, so the per diem comes into play.
No, I understand, I think it's admirable, I mean, I think we all want, you know, property owners to fix their property and be able to sell it, but to me, I'm just concerned that, I mean, it's him personally who racked it up, and now he's sort of asking for some forgiveness.
But he may have not racked it up if, if he doesn't buy a house that's already been three years vacant. That's more so what I'm saying.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak again, it's, I usually don't do this, but I will, since we were talking about Alderman Hanauer, just to address some of your concerns, we're talking about the properties, the apartment complexes out west and that have significant problems, you know, they were, in this situation, the administrative court judge told this owner, the owner was sitting right in this room, said that if you don't get these problems resolved in a hundred and eighty days, and there was a litany, and there was a list like you wouldn't believe, the potential fine was one point one million dollars. Well, they worked, we saw all this progress, and then things just all of a sudden stopped, and it ends up going back to court, and I think they're on the hook, and don't quote me on this, but for over five hundred thousand dollars. So it's an out-of-state owner that's completely ignoring this complex, and we have a, we have a, we have buildings on the northwest side of town that don't have windows, I mean, it's been, believe it or not, it did rain, we had all the wind, we had, you know, weathers, the, you know, animals, God knows what can get in there, and let alone it's unsafe, and here we are, now we're taken to, taken to administrative court, so, okay, let's just say all of a sudden they decide, and I know we're talking apples always, I'm talking about this one specifically, not the one that we're voting on, even though the topic is germane to the ordinance, but so what do we do? They come back and they start up again, do we forgive it? I just want to, I just wanted to be clear in my comments earlier, that this ordinance doesn't set a precedent, council has a choice on what to do, and I don't think that we should forgive it, I think they should, we should hold their feet to the fire, the neighborhood has had enough, it's ridiculous. I mean, weeds, mattresses laying all around the property, I've had it, it's just unbelievably terrible, and right across the street from SHG is the one in Alderwoman Conley's ward, it's terrible that we have to deal with these things, so that's why I was asking the questions about whether the property had been improved. That, that changes things in my mind, it is, for the reasons you outlined, Alderman, I appreciate you bringing it forward, but Alderman Rockford, we've never, never, in my history on the council, voted on any kind of forgiveness like this, that I remember at least, so this is new, new ground. Thank you, mayor.
Yes, sir, Alderwoman Conley.
And I, I'm gonna beat the Alderman Donlin drum just one more time, apologies for speaking again, but I agree, I don't feel that this is actually, what the precedent that's being set tonight is that there are clear questions and concerns around the horseshoe about how we examine debt forgiveness, especially in something like, like housing issues, that we are not looking at setting a firm, fast rule, that anything that gets improved gets forgiven. What we are doing instead is saying that this is a case-by-case basis, and mayor, you and I have talked about the fact that you are planning to bring an ordinance where any debt forgiveness will come before this council, so it is something that we, as a council, will be seeing, and we will be having these conversations, and I think they're healthy conversations for us to have. I also, I also believe it's important that we, that we, we set a bar, and again, it's gonna take a whole lot of money to get, I wouldn't actually, even at this point, I can't even consider forgiving fines or penalties for the, for the apartments in Ward Eight, because work started, things got cleaned up, and then it stopped. And I understand that life happens, and life can be really complicated sometimes, but that's, that's again, that's a, that's a completely different situation, and I believe really that what we're setting tonight as a standard is that we want to discuss this, and we want to hold people to a certain, you know, a certain level of completeness and of quality of work. So, yes, just, that was a long-winded way of saying, aye, yes, Alderman Donlin, thank you, thank you, mayor.
Any other discussion? Okay, clerk will now put the voting to be open, those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, those opposed, please vote no. One more to vote, oh, Alderman Gregory. And the motion fails with five voting yes, three voting no, and the other voting no.
Point of parliamentary procedure, does that mean the ordinance now goes through the committee process? the committee process?
Corporation Council, Mordock.
I would need to check on that to see if it does. I'll have an answer by the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
At this time, yes, sir. Alderman Hanauer, you have something you want to say?
I believe it, and I'm not questioning the Corporation Council, but in the past, when something doesn't get through in an emergency, it goes, it goes right back into the, kind of goes back to committee.
Yes. That's correct.
As I recall, so. I'm not an attorney and don't want to be, so.
You just play one on TV.
I believe that's correct as well, but I'll confirm.
Okay, Corporation Council, Mordock will confirm. At this time, I am going to ask that we could go out of order for a moment.
Go ahead. Make the motion, we go into executive session for...
Thank you.
Probable. 2C11 and 2C23, that's pending improbable litigation and operation of a municipal utility.
Second.
The motion is second, go to executive session, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The meeting will convene in just a few more minutes after we go to executive session.
Motion to reconvene.
So move.
The chair has a motion and a second to reconvene the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The meeting is now reconvened. The chair would like to know if there's any unfinished business to bring before the city council at this time. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
On Thursday and Friday, so about every other day, I've been getting text messages about the elevators shutting down at Lincoln Towers and the phones are not working inside the Lincoln Towers and people are getting stuck and they have to text me to see when they can get the elevators back up while they're stuck on there. I was wondering, do we have any updates? Because I know we're very serious about structure problems and with those elevators continuously not working and having an issue, I want to know where are we at? And I've asked them not to come to city council and I would ask the question for them.
Thank you. I do not have information on the current status and I would have to take a closer look at that, but I have no information on that this evening.
I would greatly appreciate if we can get a status update on where we're at with the elevators and also where we're at with the garage. They're a little concerned about the winter coming around. The garage has been shut down for almost a year now and we have people who have to walk a block and a half away. And so I told them, we'll start bringing it back up.
I'll take a look at it, I'll have some information for you tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, does anyone else have any unfinished business? I would like to bring up under unfinished business that also today is Candace Tree's 70th birthday, so I want to wish her a happy birthday out there, I know she's watching. Candace is 70 today. Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
We also, our chief just celebrated his, what was it, 50th, Kenny?
Apparently we have two chiefs that are in the 50 Club now.
So happy birthday to both you guys.
Congratulations. Okay, do we have any new business to bring before the city council? Any Alder, yep, Alderwoman Notrino.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to share a comment on some of the recent statewide and national news coverage regarding our Kier Sotis YMCA. Last week, a small group of politicians traveled to Springfield, some going more than 100 miles out of their way to single out people in our community and to target the employees, administration and members of our YMCA for public harassment. This effort to sow discord was simply intended to generate headlines and more clicks. So rather than giving these outside agitators the attention they craved, when they came to Springfield to promote themselves, I choose to celebrate the ways, large and small, in which our YMCA, our city and all of us who call Springfield home, support one another. We all appreciate that the Y strives to offer a welcoming space, so I choose to highlight the staff, the administration and the members who make it that way, rather than the politicians who traveled more than 100 miles out of their way to use our community as a backdrop for their manufactured outrage. We all see that too often, we all see that too often, the compassionate places we share are deliberately targeted by those who choose to spread callous division. So I choose to celebrate everyone who makes the Y a place for individual growth and health. We as leaders of Springfield are heirs to the legacy of Abraham Lincoln and a history that has taught us, often through struggle and through pain, that we are so much bigger when we choose to be united by compassion. So to those politicians who came to our city to foment outrage, we will not match your vitriol. We will not give you any more of the headlines and clicks you came for. Instead, we choose to hope that you find the peace that you're lacking and we hope that you receive more grace than you've offered to our neighbors. The people who come to our YMCA each bring their own backgrounds, their own abilities, their own challenges, and yes, their own identities. And they are welcomed and supported. So as leaders of our community, we will choose to lift up everyone who recognizes that our differences are not something that divide us, they are what makes our community vibrant. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Alderwoman Conley.
I was going to speak to the same topic and would just like to thank my colleague for her much more eloquently stated words of support for the Springfield YMCA's. I will say personally, our local YMCA's are where my children went to preschool, they were my kids played soccer, where I coached soccer for more years than I'm going to count. And where we continue to go for health, for community development, for friendship and for sometimes more sweat than I really want to talk about in public, they create a safe space in our community and Alderwoman Notrino, thank you very much for your words, I appreciate it. We have gems in our community with our Springfield YMCA's and I appreciate the work that everyone who works at the YMCA has put in there. I am sorry that they have had to deal with some extreme ugliness, but I certainly applaud the place that they hold in our community and look forward to maintaining my membership and probably one of these days getting out and working out after work even. Thank you. Thank you, Alderwoman Notrino.
To follow up on that, I want to share that instead of a food drive, there is a storm recovery food bundle people can go get. It is a partnership with Central Illinois Food Bank, Hy-Vee, Target, Blue Cross Blue Shield and the YMCA. It will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, July 19th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the downtown YMCA from 601 North Fourth. It's a drive up facility, they will have a bundle of food and inside the box will be dairy, protein and produce, which people would have lost during the storms. Again, this partnership is brought to you by Central Illinois Food Bank, Hy-Vee, Target, Blue Cross Blue Shield and the YMCA. It's tomorrow, July 19th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the YMCA on 601 North Fourth. It's one box per household, but they will just have you drive through and you will get food that you can replenish that was lost in the storm. So I promised them I would speak about that. And then I think Corporation Council, Mordock has something to say.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to confirm that ordinance 2023-341, which failed for emergency passage, will be heard in committee next week.
Is there any other new business to go before the city council? Alderman Gregory.
I just want to remind everyone, as we do every weekend, and it's a big thing for us, but Levitt and Conser down on the white block, it's a really, really big thing and it has really, you know, brought a little bit of everyone together down right in front of the governor's mansion and it seems to be our central home. And I just want to encourage us in Public Works to continue to look at accessibility and safety concerns, you know, for various people as they cross the street and get over a little bit. You know, I have had some requests about, you know, just some flashing signs when they're down there for people to walk and stuff, because I think that block is going to continue to be a staple in our community and I hope that we continue to look for different accessibility and safety measures to make it better. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other new business? Okay, now we're, no clicking, we're going to go to citizens who have signed up in advance to address the council first. The first citizen is Barry Fitzgerald. No? Second citizen is Alice Ramey. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it for the chief's birthday? Is that why you're doing that? They're both the chief's and their birthday, they thank you, Alice. Charles A. McCaffrey, are you here this evening? Okay. Jeff Pettis. If you could state your name and your address for the record, please.
Sure, my name's Jeff Pettis, I live at 448 West Cook Street. First of all, thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here to read a statement that was unanimously approved by the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees at our meeting last week. The Illinois Public Library Trustee Manual states that we have a legal and fiduciary obligation to ensure that our public library provides the highest quality service. We feel that these standards have not been met and that our hands have been tied in several important matters with the Lincoln Library since at least the year 2017. The pattern that began with the hiring of Will O'Hearn continued with the hiring and subsequent firing of Rochelle Hartman and culminated in the firings of Summer Griffith and Hillary Raines. This is in no way typical and should not be treated as such. The truth is, no library director in Springfield's history had ever been fired by a mayor prior to last year. In the 137-year history of Lincoln Library, there have been just 12 library directors. Four of those 12 held their positions in only the last six years. Since the library's conception, the Board of Trustees has had significant responsibilities and oversight over the public library and was a respected part of city planning. That all began to change in 2017, the reason for which we have been unable to find. Since 2017, the Board has had absolutely no involvement in decisions with library administration. The Board was not part of the search in 2017 that brought in Will O'Hearn. The Board was not part of the search in 2019 that brought in Rochelle Hartman. The Board was not consulted nor informed when Rochelle was fired in January 2022. The Board was not involved in the decision to hire Summer Griffith last year and the Board was not consulted about Summer's firing two months ago. This is not how libraries are run elsewhere and it is not how Lincoln Library was managed for its first 130 years. Rather, these are dangerous precedents that will undoubtedly make it more difficult to attract quality candidates to fill this vacancy. From 1886 until 2017, the average term of a director was 15 years, although most served closer to 20. Terms of service that all spanned multiple mayoral administrations. Also worthy of note is that the Library Board led the searches for every single library director until 2017. The city archives also show that the past directors, library directors submitted their letters of resignation to the Board, not the mayor, and it was the Board's responsibility to name acting directors. Some have stated that the Library Board is advisory only. This is neither historically accurate nor how other libraries within the state operate. To be advisory assumes that advice is both sought and given. Unfortunately, we have not been afforded that privilege. We are understandably upset that we have not been allowed to fulfill our duties as trustees, duties that are spelled out in the city code. Per the code, the Board has the power to establish the qualifications for the position of executive director, as well as the power to interview and recommend applicants for appointment to this position. The code also suggests that the Board should be involved in, or at least informed of, decisions to fire a library director. As I said, the past three directors were hired with absolutely no involvement by the Board and the past two directors were fired without the Board being given a courtesy notice. Again, it is unclear why this change occurred, but the pattern of disrespect and disregard for the Board has continued to a point where we now question what our role is. As such, we feel it is appropriate to examine the Board's role within the function of the library and work with city council to more clearly delineate duties in a way that respects the positions to which we were appointed. We have looked at libraries around Illinois with similar population densities as Springfield. Bloomington, Dehater, Champaign, Peoria, all of them have a layer of insulation that protects them from the political shakeups that come from changes in city administration. All have boards with the authority and responsibility of hiring and firing the library director. The citizens of Springfield should be made aware of the discrepancies between libraries throughout the state and our own. We are the capital of the state, we should be the exemplar. We should not be looking at other municipalities for guidance, they should be looking to us. We should have the best library in Central Illinois and we cannot do that if there are constant changeovers in the library administration that happen seemingly at the will of whoever happens to be mayor. The position of library director should not be a political one and it now seems to be intrinsically linked to the mayor's office in a way that prevents us from attracting the innovative, passionate and dedicated candidates we need to make sure that Lincoln Library is the gem it deserves to be. Springfield is unique in the way that it governs its library. It has not always been this way and it is not the way that other libraries are governed. To comply with the city code and the Board's bylaws with respect to the Board's role in hiring the next library executive director and any subsequent director, we propose that the library board members be given all of the following prior to any decision being made. One, the resumes and cover letters of all applicants for the position. Two, the opportunity to interview said applicants. And three, the opportunity to recommend applicants to be hired to the mayor and the city council. The Board wants to work with you to help find a solution to this situation and we are encouraged, after speaking with Corporation Council, that this administration is open to working with us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Derek Johnson. Could you please state your name and address for the record, sir?
My name is Derek Johnson, 2404 Boise and Berry Lane.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor, distinguished council members, guests, constituents, thank you for your time and good evening. Before the creation of this world and assimilation of man, before the first white indentured servants and African slaves were introduced to the new world that was already preoccupied well before 1619, before racism and discrimination, before we the people. before racism and discrimination, before we, the people, became synonymous with the living document in 1787 to rule one nation under God by both prescriptive and proscriptive norms, while specific cultures continued and still continue to suffer immensely due to society's lack of... And before the Pledge of Allegiance was introduced in 1892 to this nation's education system with all of its injustices, there was and will always be God. Does this prelude envelop and tell the tale of a capital city run by society that attempts to bury its tradition in racism, education, and employment so discreetly that these inadequacies continue to exist on a large scale to the mayor? Knowing that you're well versed with issues concerning racism, discrimination, and traditionalism, will you be utilizing any of your constituents to appease the people of color concerning a major issue of color or race? As a resident of Springfield, the little... Excuse me. The little bit I've heard about you in the media makes me ponder if you'd be elected to serve society or serve the people. Time will tell if society wins out or if the people win out based on color or principle. So throughout society, it's an undeniable cultural and historic fact that the truth will never fit into Springfield's school curriculum taught to our children, our future. Why? Because tradition does not like to be shaken or stirred. The Honorable Booker T. Washington, a former slave, educator, author, intellect, and founder of Tuskegee Institute, was cognizant of and maintained the mindset that Negroes should learn a trade and contribute to society in this way without making waves in society. Overall, Washington believed in not making waves in society, while W.E.B. Du Bois argued Washington's point of view. Dr. Du Bois, the first Black to graduate from Harvard with a PhD, okay? You could say he was somewhat the Malcolm X of the early 18th, 19th, 20th century, excuse me, stating that Negroes want their civil rights now. As a capital city, many people of color have been groomed to accept what they have been taught, what they have been given, what they have earned, but remember, don't inquire too much or else. Many people of color have grown up, returned, and raised families here who are successful, while others have also always chosen to be part of the problem and never part of the solution. Regarding knowledge and education, society is fine as long as you don't inquire. This mindset to not question stifles many from obtaining facts and truths to whatever you're attempting to obtain. Be satisfied with the norm is what society wants us to do. Are you a part of that norm? Parents, just because you were or were not taught a specific way in school, does this hold the same for your child or your grandchildren? Pray it does not. Lastly, Abraham Lincoln is consistently dubbed the Great Emancipator. But regardless of the times, who is Lincoln's Great Emancipator? It's ironic how society utilizes God's name in vain and continues failing to learn from hindsight, which will forever be man's downfall. So what type of leaders does Springfield have? Everyone by now should know or be aware of the school shooting that transpired in one of the Detroit suburbs several years ago, when in fact, the parents should have been held responsible along with that 15-year-old. This should have been going on for some time.
Sir, we need you to wrap up your minute.
Yes, ma'am. I am. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Why are the roots of traditionalism here in Springfield, Illinois so prevalent? Why does my own culture continue to inflict genocide? And last but not least, why does law enforcement continue to annihilate our Black man? And last but not least, the ultimate question is, God, God? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. James Johnson. Could you please state your name and address for the record, sir?
Yes, ma'am, I will. It is up there on that marquee, and it says, Mr. James Johnson. That's who I am. You guys know who I am. Lifelong member. Shame my first rodeo being up here. And since it's the birthday of the police and fire, I'm gonna leave that alone today. We'll get to him another time. But let me get started, because I got five minutes. He who has ears, let him hear. Let me start off with a thanks to Doug Brown, your crew. Thanks, man. You guys did a fantastic job. And I want you to know, you know, I'll get on you about certain stuff, but I'm gonna ride with you when you're right. And for you to have our power back on in 10 days or less, whatever it was, we all had different times, but I want to thank you personally. Because some of the stuff that I'm hearing about people being unhappy because their power didn't come back on fast enough, we just gonna pray for them. You know, we just gotta leave that alone. But if none of your guys got hurt and the guys that traveled in came and did what they need to do and didn't get hurt, that's kudos to CWLP. Pass the word. Thanks. Their folks, your department, them guys who jumped out and helped clean up the streets and do all that, pass the word. Thanks, man. And I know you guys are still at it. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Now, what, three Thursdays ago, I think the weather meteorologist called it a deratio we had come through here. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. And then some weeks ago, I stood right up here and told you guys about some disruption. And that deratio gave us a disruption that we haven't seen in a long time. Now, for us ones who made it through 78, the ice storm, we'll be all right. It's okay. And for the people that are upset and didn't get their power back on, like I said, we're just gonna pray for them. But I want you guys to know and understand that that disruption will not be the last. What you need to think about is what's gonna happen next? What's gonna come next that's gonna affect every last ward, Sangamon County, or even the state of Illinois? We need to start preparing. Now, I know here in... Whenever you guys start having discussion about meters and what we should do, and yeah, it's gonna cost, and everybody probably doesn't need it. I'm gonna be with you on that one hand, all right? But we probably do need to upgrade, because that's what a disruption is about. It's about...
I can't believe you're with me, ma'am.
So, yeah.
Thanks, James.
Yeah. So, but here's the issue now, because that's gonna make some people real mad. Some people, it's gonna be okay. But see, now we gotta figure out how do we work this to where Mr. Brown knows where the power is out at? And it's gonna cost. So the question is, you know, what do we do for those people who can't afford it? It's gonna be an issue, and there's gonna be another major disruption. Now, I listened to his spiel for the hour about two weeks ago, and this is what I took from listening to it. And if I step on your toe, just say ouch, because it sounded like the aldermen were calling or maybe sending emails to Doug, and maybe even Fuchs, but I don't know. But I'm a betting man. I'm gonna go out and say that I'm sure they heard from some of our aldermen around this horseshoe. Now, with something that major, I'm gonna go out and lay them and say, as a citizen, I don't need them answering cell phones and emails. What citizens want is for them to do what they need to do and get our power on. And that's all we can ask for. I was one, too. I was out of power. I didn't call my alderman. I didn't call the director. I waited it out, just like any other citizen in our community we had to do. And that's what we should do. And since I ran out of time, I'm gonna be... I'm gonna be short on... I'm gonna be responsible on my time, a good steward of my time. But if that's the case in the future, I'm gonna ask you guys to let those two directors do what we asked them to do, and that's get our city back in order. Don't bug them with no emails and phone calls. They know the power's out. They know them trees are down. Your neighborhood and your ward ain't no more important than the next. So in these times of trouble, can we all just get along? Now, I'm gonna end it right there, but I want you guys to have a good week. Be blessed, and know that a duration, a disruption, is on its way again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Lopez?
Good evening. My name is Mike Lopez. I live in the village of Jerome, which overlooks the city of Springfield. At 29... My address is 1537 West Homewood. I'm here just to say thank you again. I thank Mayor Busher for letting me stand with her directors and the police chief two weeks ago. It was a very, very bad situation. I caught a lot of crap at the village from people that said they couldn't reach CWLP. I said, they're doing the best they can. I want to say kudos to Doug Brown, his staff, and to the brothers and sisters of the electrical union and all the partners that came throughout the region, the state, and the nation to help out. Couldn't have been done. Think about it. At one point, you had 48% of the power grid out of 117,000 citizens, plus the neighboring communities of the villages that rely on the power source. And to have that come back to zero statistically the following Monday, which was the 10th of July, is remarkable for what you had to face. The only thing I'm asking is we have to have a better discussion among the villages, outside government and with you, to get a fine tune on the message tool. There are a number of messages out there. There's a CWLP website you can sign up to sign up, get text messages. I know that's probably not able to do readily under the circumstances, but I failed my constituents, and I apologized to them on Facebook. I was not able to readily give them information except on my own social media and some other of our trustees. And we address that, and we'll work through it. But I thank you for your service. I know it was a detriment on this city. It's gonna have an economic impact when all the numbers come out for the loss of revenue along the business areas, wherever they are at. You've had talk on social media by one business that said they may shut down. But we have to get through this all, but we have to work together. I'm speaking as a constituent. I pay a water, electrical bill to CWLP every month at my home. But I've also been asked by some members of my board to speak that we need to be part of the discussion. I agree with the previous speaker. Climate change and other things and the aging of this grid, this is gonna happen again over and over, and a wake-up call for us in Jerome. We, under emergency proclamation, we approved the purchase to get a generator. We did not have a generator for our whole civic center complex, because we thought we could buy something else instead of spending $50,000 or $60,000. But we couldn't provide a cooling center for people that needed it. And I failed that. We failed that, so we're gonna purchase that. But we want to work together. At some point, I want to have a discussion with Doug Brown, find out how we can figure out how to make these power grids better than they are now. I'm not an engineer. I don't get paid the salary you do and the know-how you have with your people, but I had an 86-year-old lady that chewed my butt out because her power was the only one out in her neighborhood, and everybody else had power. We're waving at her, and she was sweating in her house. These things we gotta look at, but I want to say thank you for all of your, all your service. I reached out to a number of your aldermen to get questions and get answers, and you did come back and say, here's what we can do. This is what's gonna happen. But I do thank you for all your leadership, regardless who the mayor is, who the council is. I still pay my electric bill. And one thing I do want to ask, can you change the speed of the elevator out here at the city hall? They haven't changed a bit since Tim Dabbling. You still press the button, you gotta wait forever. But I want to say thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Erin Kirkpatrick. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Of course. Good evening. My name is Erin Kirkpatrick. I live at 3535 Tozer Road. And I wanted to just briefly ask about the lime sledge storage with CWLP. I saw back in May of 2020 that CWLP anticipated the new lime sledge location would be identified in 2020, and then those ponds would be completed no later than the summer of this year. And then I saw in January of this year, the construction of the new lime pond was set to begin this summer and be complete no later than October 15th of this year. So I wanted to inquire where and/or when that project is currently anticipated to be completed, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Erin, can you just leave maybe with, let's see, who's here from my team? I'll just ask the purchasing director, Lesko, get your information, and we can follow up with you. I don't know how to follow up with you for your answer. Thank you. Okay. Never mind then. Doug will take care of it. There you go. Mike, you're off the hook.
Yeah, so the lime lagoons, the new ones, will be in operation in October of 2023. So that was the plan all along, once we got the contract and knew a schedule for them. So they're on track, ready to go with that. They've done a pretty phenomenal job with it as well, so.
Thank you, Director. Are there any other citizens that want to address the council that did not previously sign up?
Listen to it, Erin.
We have a citizen, sorry, that's standing up. I see you, ma'am. You can come up.
You got one more?
Sorry. Is that all right? You had a motion in a second. Is it okay to let her speak? Those of you that made the motion in a second, are you okay with letting the citizen speak? Thank you. Ma'am, if you don't mind stating your name and address for the record, that would be great.
My name is Dorothy Webb. My address is 700 Eastman in Springfield. The reason I'm up here, I didn't sign up, and my alderman, Rockford, I bet had a complaint over on 8th and Pure Road with the weeding over by the railroad track. I've been dealing with this for five years, and I have talked to the new director. I have talked to him, also talked to Nick Bottom, which he no longer exists. So every time I call the city public work about this, I get some runaround. So the weeds are actually tall, and it's going down through the alley there on 8th and Pure Road. And with this complaint that I have, I've been complaining, complaining, and I did it once before myself, cleaning it up. But it's not my job. It's everybody's job. We don't have a... We got a problem, but we got to come to a solution, and we don't have this. And it makes your property value go down, and I'm looking forward to see this getting cleaned up. Some say it's the railroad problem. Some say it's the city's problem. I don't know whose problem it is. It's everybody's. whose problem it is. It's everybody's problem. We just work together and try to maintain it and get this cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other citizens that wish to address the council? All right. Oh, sorry, Alderwoman Purchase has her hand raised. I didn't see it.
Thank you. I addressed this about a month and a half ago. I asked Director Fuchs about, Chuck actually laughed at me. He said Bob would be rolling over in his grave. We normally go out and clean up for the state fair over there where Ms. Dorothy lives. She's now in Ward 4, but she was previously in my ward. I had said the weeds are taller than my hips, and I'm 5'3". This is on the outside of the gate, and so it's not the railroad's job. It's our job. And inside the gate is the railroad shop. I learned that sitting in this seat for over two and a half years, and I haven't had a follow-up, but now I can hand it over to Mr. Rockford, because it's his area.
Alderman Rockford has signed up to...
Hey, Dave, here's the situation over there. That, the side is on the west side of the, of the gate, the fence along the railroad tracks. We mow the east side, and we're talking between North Grand and Eastman. It goes all the way down. So, but they're not hitting the west side of the, with their long, with the long arm, the Alamo more. So what they need to do is go back and make sure they hit that side. And if they, if there's, if it's possible, pick the garbage up before we, we mow. I mean, there's bags, there's carpet, there's all kinds of stuff, you know? And I know, I know that it's been tough last month, so I understand, but sooner or later, you know, something's gotta be done.
I understand, and because we had fewer contractors to sign up to mow vacant and open lots, we reopened it about three weeks ago, and we actually have made arrangements with, with an organization that has specialized in mowing railroad right-of-ways on both sides of it, and they should be going into action here shortly. We've made that arrangement with them.
Thank you, Director.
Good job, Rob. I may follow up. Mr. Fuchs, how many, how many grass contractors are we up to? I know you had that open again.
We, we had 23, and we normally have about 35 or 36, and I think maybe we're up to 28 or 29 now, but we're, we're short. A lot of the, the organizations that have been doing this for many years have retired. They've been doing it for a long time, and they decided they didn't want to do it anymore.
When it's time again, let's, let's get together, let's put it out, because there is a lot of, it is a lot of grass contractors and younger, younger men that's doing it now, and I want to help them, you know, with the insurance thing portion of it, that hurts, hurts them a little bit, just going about it and stuff like that, and really being a real entity. So if we, you know, a few months beforehand, we can get some. We just gotta do some...
I'd be glad to work with you.
Thank you, sir.
So we had a motion to adjourn in a second. Can we get those back again?
Yes.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.